If everybody's ready, we'll call to order the meeting in the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, April the 19th. Greenwood, stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, we're going to observe a moment of silence for Joswinder Singh, who was a member of the Sikh community here in Greenwood who was killed in the FedEx shooting. And then after that moment of silence, Mr. Bates is going to lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne.
Let's observe a moment of silence.
Lord, we're thankful tonight to be able to be here, to be representatives of this community. We're thankful for the city of Greenwood and what it means to all of our residents. Our hearts do go out and we ask that you give comfort to those who have lost loved ones here in our city. We also pray, Lord, that you would be with those that run the operations on a day-to-day basis for our city as we think about the administration. Lord, as we also think about those in the police department, we think about those that are all in the firehouses. And, Lord, we're also think about, think about those that, that in the street department and the public works building and all that goes on there to make Greenwood the city that we all come to appreciate and love. And we ask that you be with us tonight, too, and give us extreme additional wisdom for the decisions that are being made here tonight. And we ask and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. A roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Allen.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Popper.
Here.
Lexi.
Present.
Dillonson.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. We do have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our regular meeting of April the 5th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lexi. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Dillonson.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. At our last meeting, oh, actually, after our last meeting, is brought to my attention and the clerk's attention by the judge that there was an error in the minutes that we approved of March 15th. And so all of you should have received a memo on that and a motion that needs to be made to correct that. Do I have a motion to, to make the motion as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates. Second. Second. Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, roll call then of the motion to amend the minutes of the March 15th meeting.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Popper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Dillonson.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Minutes of the March 15th committee meeting are amended on a vote of nine to zero. Reports, corporation counsel.
You should have received the litigation report and the items on my monthly report. If you have questions about either of those, please let me know. Be happy to answer them for you.
All right. Anything from the controllers this time?
Nothing from my office at this time.
All right, committee board reports. All of you should have received a copy of the, my report from the last RDC meeting, but probably unless you've checked your email in the last couple hours, you probably haven't seen it yet. I do apologize for that being announced so late today, but you should have a copy of the report. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me and ask. Any other committee or board reports? All right, hearing none, then we have a representative from the Johnson County Public Library here tonight, so we'll turn the microphone over to you at this point.
Oh, thank you so much. Hi, I'm Lisa Littner, the director of the Johnson County Public Library, and I just come to visit you about once a year to share some library updates. You guys have, you might know, we have three library districts in our county, and you guys have the joy of having two library systems in your city of Greenwood. So our White River branch is in the city of Greenwood, and we love sharing our news about things going on at the library. So last week I dropped off a library guide, and inside is a update of our 2020 year in review, and we just wanted to share some of the kind of resilient things we've been doing through the pandemic to stay active and be very helpful to patrons. We expanded our curbside to-go program so people can pick up their materials right from their car outside without coming in if they so choose. We're going to continue to do that pandemic or not because it's been such a wonderful gift for people who, who need to just quickly get their materials and go. We also developed a program called JCPL2Go, which is a delivery program. So anyone who is in quarantine or home ill and want library materials, we will drive them to your home and then we'll pick them up when you're ready to return them. We want to make sure people have access to information all throughout this time. We started a little free pantry at the Franklin Branch Library, and we have lots of other great details in our 2020 year in review. 2021 has been a year I think we've all been looking forward to, and on March 23rd, we broke ground on US 31 for a new Clark Pleasant Branch Library. It's just south of Whiteland Road, and it will serve Clark and Pleasant townships. We're really excited because we're expanding our smallest branch in the community to about 72% larger. And some of the highlights is we're going to have lots of flexible meeting room space and some study rooms that are really in hot demand by our community members. We'll also have a teen center. We'll have an adult learning center that will move from Franklin to the Clark Pleasant Branch because we really feel like that's going to be the heart of Johnson County for a lot of people who need access to adult basic education and to immigrants who need English language courses, we provide that for them. And we'll have a early childhood learning center that will be absolutely dynamic for preschoolers getting ready for kindergarten at Clark Pleasant Schools. And we're, the Library Foundation will be fundraising to try to build a nature trail, a community garden, and provide public art at the new library. So it's an exciting year for us as we move forward. Just some upcoming programs of interest, some of them will be in your program guide you have. This month, we are walking to Mordor. So if you're a Lord of the Rings fan, you know what I'm talking about. We are walking the ring to throw it into the fiery depths of Mordor. And luckily, our program is, our earth miles are worth about 10 Lord of the Ring miles, so you only have to walk 179 miles to reach Mordor here in Johnson County. So that's fun. You still can sign up for that and join us. We have more than 100 programs going on every month. And next Tuesday, we have a Zoom program with an expert on national parks, which has been a great, has experienced a great boon of travel and tourism this last year, so we're excited for that. That's next week. And then we also have music lessons coming up on May 4th, and on May 17th, our Explore Summer Reading Program starts. And the only thing I'd like to add is we have a new database for magazines. You can download 6,500 different titles, many in different languages, and that is with your library card through our cloud library view stand app. So just fantastic resources we're trying to bring to the community, whether you want to visit us in person, which you can browse and use the computer, or visit us online and use your library card online. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate what the library does, and you all do a great job of serving the communities.
Oh, thanks so much.
All right, this is the opportunity where we set aside time for people in the audience to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. So if you're here tonight and wish to speak to the council concerning the items that are on our agenda tonight, please speak up, state your name and address for the record. A reminder, there is a five-minute time limit for individuals and a 20-minute time limit for groups, so.
Understood. Mr. Campbell, if it's okay, I'm going to go first and I'll yield time to everyone. Good evening. I'm Randy Gooden, 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana, 46143. I want to address a few things that are on the agenda tonight, and I want to start simply with Resolution 2107. And this is for that large development that's out there by the university home subdivision. And I'm, I would like to ask the council to reconsider on this as far as what they're asking for, because I went back and looked at the documentation on, on the application for abatement. I could find no values listed in section three on the statement of benefits. Well, what I mean by that is there's absolutely no jobs that are guaranteed, there's no pay scale that's guaranteed, there's nothing listed there. They've not committed to anything except the buildings and asking for the abatements and everything. And I know we've spoken about speculative buildings, and I understand, but again, we have absolutely no commitment on this. So please keep that in mind when you vote. The same with Resolution 21-10, which is also tied to 21-08. Section two, subsection eight and nine also does not list any statement of benefits attached regarding jobs, salaries, there's absolutely no commitment as far as what they're going to bring here. And I bring this up because someone could go in and build a, a building, and the first development is over a million square feet and only need maybe 10 to 20 employees in all that space. That doesn't create a lot of revenue for us based on what we're giving them in the abatements and everything that go along with it. So please keep that in mind whenever you do your voting. Resolution 2111, fully, fully support ERM Co. coming to Greenwood. They did it right, they did list out the benefits. They're going to be adding 20 additional jobs as well as bringing 125 jobs with a value of over $10 million in salaries. Fully support a development like that and then bringing them to our city. I just wanted to put that out there. Now, my last item is I want to speak in favor of the 523 South Madison Avenue project. I know you're going to hear some fuss, and you've seen some of it on social media, people really not understanding or maybe not having a vision that do not support this. And I want to tell you why I do support this. It's a beautification to that older town area of Greenwood. It really will improve the appeal down there. I know that some people have raised a fuss about traffic, but I also know in that development and what's going to be happening, we are going to be working on Madison and Old Meridian to help alleviate some of the congestion. It is an added value, and it will increase the surrounding property values. Again, it's aesthetically pleasing, it will bring up the property values, and it will also play into the needs of current working professionals, people like myself who work from home, who are looking for places that have a walkable community, who, if we are working from home, just want to be able to get out and maybe walk to the park, maybe walk to the library, maybe even walk over to Mrs. Curl's or over to Jacamo's. This is perfectly positioned for something like that, for the, whether they be young, middle-aged, or even retirees that are looking for a place where they have that walkability, and it will allow us to support what is already existing in Old Town Greenwood. The income potential, and what I mean by this is I sit down and did a calculation. Based on if we gave each employee 200 square feet, based on the square feet that's been committed for retail, if we were to flip that in office space, that would net us, if we averaged out the hourly salary to $20 an hour, based on a 200 square feet, I'm sorry, that would bring us in over $3 million per year. Now, I know that this is slated to be retail, so I backed everything down and I cut it in half, and I said 40 employees in that retail space, and I cut the wage back to $12 an hour, which is still kind of low because I think it will generate more than that. Even at that, we generate nearly $1 million in revenue for employees that will be new to that area. Now, they may be existing citizens in the area, but we are employing people. We're not only doing that, we're providing spaces for them to live in, and again, we have, we have amenities for seniors, we have amenities for those in midlife, and even for the younger. In my opinion, it is a perfect project for that area. I've yet to hear anything pitched that is better, that could accommodate anything better. I can't see us building a warehouse down there, I really can't, and it's not enough space to build another Greenwood Park Mall, and I really wouldn't want to compete with them if we did have the space.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
Your time is up. Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak about something on the agenda for tonight? State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mr. Campbell. This is Christian Maslowsky, president and CEO of Aspire Johnson County, where the Economic Development Organization and Chamber of Commerce for Johnson County proudly serving Greenwood. Our offices are at 1499 Windhorst Way, Suite 160, Greenwood, Indiana, 46143. I just want to first involve, say I'm here to rise in support on behalf of the organization of the 523 South Madison Project, in particular, ordinance 21-13 and 21-09. I'm going to thank the many sponsors of the bill. Aspire supports downtown development as a general policy because it yields private investment in, into our downtowns, it supports a sustainable commercial development, it enhances our quality of life, and it develops a healthier community by promoting that walkable lifestyle. With respect to this particular project, it addresses a couple of critical needs that we have. First, it's increased commercial development and commercial space for retail and for small businesses and offices and restaurants. But number two, and this is critical, you know, we have been hearing from employers for a number of years that there's a demand for a diverse set of housing, and that there's a demand for increased housing of all type, including that walkable lifestyle that we see that has been proposed for 523. In fact, this type of housing is more often to attract the types of workers that want to work in our professional offices, or who want to start a business and launch a business out of, out of their home. It helps to attract a lot of our talent that are downsizing, and there are maybe empty nesters, and they're looking for a smaller place to live, and it helps keep them in our community. All that talent doesn't leave our community. And so this is the type of development that Greenwood's been talking about for a long time. I want to thank the city council and thank the city of Greenwood for your more than five years of careful due diligence on this project and the many, many professional studies to ensure that this is a good fit for the community, and it's a good fit for the sustainability of the quality of life and sustainability of residential development. So again, I just want to say thank you and appreciate the development, and we rise in support of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Christian. Appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to speak to the council?
Mr. Campbell, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is, this is Brian Harris. I live at 399 Euclid Avenue, Greenwood, Indiana, 46142. I've lived at that location for about 32 years now, and I live about eight blocks from the project known as 523 South Madison. I too rise in support of this project. I've served about 10 years on the Greenwood RDC Board, and so I've seen a lot of, a lot of projects come and go, but I fully support this one. And the reason I voted for this project on the RDC Board is because I like the project economics. One thing that I think is, needs to be made clear is the city of Greenwood is not building these apartments. The developer is building these apartments in this, this particular project. In fact, about 80% of the project is the developer's share of the project. The city is contributing a little bit less than 20%. So I, I hear people say on social media, the city is building these apartments in this project, the city is not. Most of the city's funds are going to go towards a parking garage, which I believe is sorely needed in downtown Greenwood. And so I, I wanted you to know, too, that my experience outside in my, in the, in the real world, I actually am a banker by trade. I've been a banker for 33 years. About 23 of those years has been in commercial banking, and about 10 of those 23 years has been in commercial real estate. So I'm very familiar with looking at projects and their economics, and this project makes a lot of sense from a, strictly from a financial perspective. Now, I like it, too, because I am, I'm eight blocks away, and because I'm eight blocks away, I got to figure my, the value of my property is probably going to go up, which contrary to social media, most people want their property values to go up. They don't want them to go down, they want them to go up. And so I'm, I'm for this project for that reason as well. And just, just so you know, I, there's been some talk about the capacity of, of the school system, in particular ISAM Elementary. Having spoke to somebody who has a child there now and who used to be a teacher at the school, she actually sees this as an opportunity to perhaps grow ISAM a little bit and potentially get some more funding through tax dollars from, from an increased school enrollment. Now, there might be some growing pains, I understand that, but I think ISAM, you know, I've lived by ISAM for a while now, and you know, it could probably use some upgrades, it could probably use a better playground, it could probably use some, some, you know, some more school classrooms. And so I see, I, or at least this person saw this as a, as an opportunity maybe to improve ISAM. And again, I've heard on social media, you know, the ISAM doesn't have the capacity. It sounds like the superintendent of Greenwood Schools. It sounds like he's in support of this project, at least from things that I'm hearing him say. He can speak for himself, but that's just the things that I'm hearing people say. So if our superintendent of the school is for it, it's hard for me as somebody that, you know, I'm not that knowledgeable of the school system and what capacities are and aren't. And so I rise today in support of that project for these reasons. Thank you.
Harris.
Mr. Campbell, this is Kent Deconic, and Mr. Harris gave me a great segue to talk, if I may, next. Kent Deconic, Superintendent of Greenwood Schools. I'll reiterate what I mentioned last meeting and the initial meeting, that we are in support of this. More students is a good thing for school districts, and particularly at ISAM Elementary, as I mentioned in a number of communications with a few people, that we really have to see a growth of 80 to 90 students at the elementary level out of this project before we start being concerned about other needs. And last meeting, I talked about in trying to be transparent and trying to think through all, all the things we would do. I mentioned, you know, there's always the possibility you could bring portable trailers in, we would, we would redistrict, we would allow for voluntary intra-district transfers, but really, all of those items are quite frankly moot points if we don't get anywhere near that 80 to 90 student number out of this project. And so I don't know what the final number is. I leave that and trust that to the council and, and the developers and the mayor to work through. But I've been on record many times stating that until we get to that 80 or 90 student number, we, we are in good shape. And then after that, there are a number of items that we can do to help mitigate crowding there, and any of those would be on the table. But again, I got to reiterate, none of those need to even be part of a conversation to worry unless we're getting to that 90 student level. So I want to make that clear again, where we would be with that. If you were to tell me there's, there's going to be 200 kids out of this project, I would scratch my head and I would be concerned, and we would have to really think of some things. But I am not, I've continually not gotten those num, types of numbers. And again, I've been very clear the whole time that 80 to 90 kids probably is where we'd have to even start worrying about overcrowdedness. So again, thank you for your time, and I'm always happy to answer any other questions people have, but I just want to make sure that I was able to mention that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Deconic. All right, anyone else wish to speak to the council at this time?
Yeah, hi, this is Matthew Smith, 450 South Great Drive, Greenwood, Indiana, 46143. I'm here to support the Madison Avenue Project. My family and I are stakeholders in the community, like many other people that have spoken here. We purchased our home in 2014, and so far, we've been just ecstatic with the growth that we've seen. The proposed development is less than a mile away from our property, and because of that, we have a significant stake in the success or failure of that property. We also have two elementary school-aged children that are, both attend Greenwood Community Schools. Some can, some have had concerns about the impact of this project on the school systems, and I do not share those concerns. I'm not an expert in education, but if Dr. Deconic says that it will not have an adverse impact on the school system, I'm inclined to believe him because I know and trust his professional opinion. Another concern has been the possible increase in traffic in the area. Since the community has become acclimated to the new roundabout and the new traffic flow at the Smith Valley and Madison intersection, I feel that the traffic has significantly improved from the, the poorly timed stoplight that was there previously. I believe that the effect on the traffic with this development will be minimal, especially with the inclusion of the new parking garage. I believe that this development will bring more activity to Old Town Greenwood and that it is the best possible use for the land. It will, it will fill a need in the area for more housing and new commercial development in an area that's been landlocked from truly new development for many, many years. More people are seeing what me and my family saw in Greenwood when we decided to invest in our home, and I'm hoping that the council will welcome those people and businesses with this new development.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else at this time wishing to address the council?
Mr. Campbell, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I'm Brad Nemeth, with, I'm the president of Restorable Town Greenwood Incorporated, PO Box 7922, Greenwood. I'm speaking on behalf of the executive board of Restorable Town Greenwood Incorporated, and we support the 523 South Madison Project this evening, but we do ask for support from the council and the city of Greenwood in the following areas. One, concurrently to this process, we ask for an ad hoc committee comprised of business people and representatives from Restorable Town Greenwood Board members to be created for the purpose of further study and providing input into the impact of this project and impact of continued development as related to the schools, traffic, infrastructure, and emergency support such as fire and police. And then we also ask for two, for the board of Restorable Town Greenwood Incorporated to be included in discussions as to the further development in Old Town. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to the council this time?
Yes, I do. My name is Tracy Champion. I live at 142 Ursulane, Greenwood, 46143. I am actually here to speak up against 523 South Madison, contrary to what everyone else believes. I actually live right behind the Dollar Tree Shopping Plaza, so to get in and out of my neighborhood, there's one entrance and one exit. It is very dangerous. The roundabout has not helped safety in that area at all as far as getting in and out. In fact, it backs up and you sit there for a good two or three minutes just trying to get out, and that's without the extra traffic that's going to be coming through when we put these apartments in. We live, we moved here close to 20 years ago, and at that time, it had the smaller town feel. I was, I actually got involved with the Restorable Town Greenwood Project. When it first started, we had the parade, helped out, passed out flyers. We're excited because I honestly thought we were going to keep Greenwood at a size that was not going to give us the big city feel, and disappointed because it has become so much of the big city feel. We could have stayed in Indianapolis for all of this. And so my husband and I are very disappointed in the way, the direction it's gone. It doesn't seem that the council Um, it doesn't seem that the council considers any of our opinions. My, most of my neighborhood, my neighbors are against this. Um, I know when the roundabout went in, we were against that. It, it's not a very good designed roundabout. We do have constant accidents. I know people speak against that, but it's, it's, I'm here. I see it all the time. Um, and I don't know that my opinion's gonna matter, but I wanted to make it known that the people in our area are not in favor of this project at five two three South Madison Avenue. It's just gonna make it worse. I know everyone's saying that the traffic is not gonna be worse, but it is. We've watched it get worse day by day. And as time goes on, it's just gonna get worse. I don't like the idea that we're just shoving a whole huge city inside this small landlocked area called Greenwood that used to be small and more family oriented. And so honestly, we would like to move out, but we don't have the money to do that right now. So we're stuck in this predicament. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else at this time wishing to speak to the council?
All right. Mr. Campbell, I did have a, uh, representative email me. And he was traveling and he wanted to speak. And he said I could read his email for him. Do you wanna read that now?
Yeah. Go ahead and read that now.
I'll see. It's, it's not long. This is from, uh, Charles Miller. He lives, and his wife, they live at four eight seven Euclid Avenue. Uh, he's traveling out of town, so he wasn't sure if he'd be able to, to speak. But what he emailed me was, "My wife and I moved to downtown Greenwood on Euclid Avenue about five years ago. We've made significant improvements to our property and plan to live here for many years to come. We wanted to be in a walkable area with a real sense of multi-age community, restaurants, shopping, social gatherings, et cetera. We are in favor of the redevelopment taking place on the old Greenwood High School location. We have reviewed the drawings and we like what we see. We trust that those of the leadership, redevelopment commission, common council, mayor, et cetera, have done the necessary due diligence to address this project's impact on safety, parking, walkability, et cetera. We are in favor of this project and believe it will have a positive impact for long, for the long term, bring more restaurants and shops. Just as important, continue to support our existing businesses."
All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else before we move on? All right. Hearing none, then moving on to ordinances and resolutions. There are none other than us to consider. Uh, first reading, ordinance number twenty-one thirteen.
An ordinance of the common council of the city of Greenwood Johnson County, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of its city of Greenwood, Indiana economic development revenue bonds of two thousand and twenty-one, five twenty-three South Madison project, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of such revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, sponsored by Hill, Hopper, Dine, Campbell, Gibson, Lexi, and Williams.
Grab a motion.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Lexi. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hill. Anybody here wishing to speak to this at this time?
Jeff, can you hear me? Okay, I'm at, good. All right. Uh, good, good evening. We just had a few, few, uh, items that we wanted to address on behalf of the project from the project team. So there were a few different questions that we received from the introduction, uh, the last council meeting, from the counselors that we wanted to specifically address. Now, uh, during the audience section, some of this has already been sent from the subject matter experts. So the Greenwood School Superintendent, et cetera. Certainly wanted to provide the information in written form as well. So one of the first, uh, concern areas was around school age children. And we define that as K through twelve. And as far as impact from this. And there's been a couple of different ways that we've tried to go internally about seeking information, seeking an estimate in what this development would, would generate as far as school age children that would be anywhere from kindergarten through high school. So the first, first place we went is to the developer who will actually be marketing, marketing the actual, so. So when we look at both their demographic profile that they're using for their marketing report, where they redecreed the area, as well as comparable properties that they both built in Indiana and then the Midwest, there, they went through a process where they looked at the total number of units, the total number of those units that would be estimated to have children in them. And then ultimately, that works down to about twenty-five school age children in for rent and approximately eleven in the for sale. So of the, uh, two hundred and ninety-seven for rent units, approximately twenty-five, uh, school age children, and then the sixty for sale units, approximately eleven. The next place we looked to, to try to provide the best information, uh, for you all to make a decision, was we also internally looked at national studies that have looked at this, the impact of, uh, development and redevelopment, specifically mixed-use development with regards to schools. And many of the reports circled around a national average of around one school age ch, child per eleven, uh, for rent units. So that works out to be approximately, um, nine percent. And we extrapolate that on the total number of units. It comes in again, it'll own twenty-seven, twenty-seven children. Again, these are estimates. One other source that we went through was we looked at comparable. And there's obviously not a, um, development, uh, like this immediately in downtown, but a similar construction style, uh, is in the Garrett Company's Burge Project that was, uh, most recently constructed, uh, just off of Emerson Avenue. We reached out to their, uh, their company as well as they originally, just recently went through the full lease up on that project. And they estimated on thirty students, uh, in the same age profile from their development. One thing to consider there, they also have twenty-two three-bedroom units in their project. This project has zero three-bedroom units planned. So we tried to provide a couple of different sources, one from the developer, one from national studies, and then one from a, uh, completely wholly separate, uh, group that is also leasing in, in the area to try to provide counsel with the best information that we have available. Uh, the other just, uh, component, taking a step back just from the, those estimates, we all thought it would be also beneficial for everyone to understand the vision for the project too. So the, the vision for this, and that's why you see no three-bedroom units, you see a, a large amount of for-sale condo in townhomes, is that the residential, the housing units part of this downtown revitalization plan is really intended to be more suited for individuals, young couples, empty nesters, et cetera. So it's really, uh, trying to focus and market, uh, for those, those types of families and individuals. And then I, I'm pretty very grateful that, uh, Dr. DeConic was on tonight. And as he mentioned, they have capacity for eighty to ninety students, uh, immediately, without any, any accommodations. So at the, even the high side of thirty-six, uh, thirty-six, uh, students, that would be, uh, you know, less than, less than half of what they could immediately serve for today. And I would also just, uh, encourage understanding work. This is a two and a half year long construction, uh, project as well. So that as these leasing's come into play, there will be a lot of time to make those accommodations and plans as well. Um, the next concerning area and question we received from council was with regards to traffic. And I would encourage you all to, if you have not already, to review the A and F, um, engineering traffic study. The study was originally completed in two thousand and sixteen, which was really the onslaught of the planning with regards to the massing model, as well as the initial planning for the strategy that ultimately led for the, uh, requests for information that went out to the developers for their proposals. Uh, this project informed a lot of the downtown traffic improvements really throughout the area and contemplated the new roundabout at Smith Valley and Madison. And as you look through the report, fully contemplated this project. It's one of the first few pages in this project was explicitly, uh, provided to them as an impact of the area to be looked at. So at that time in two thousand and sixteen, it was the Runcel, Ernst Gerder massing models that were really the only thing available yet because the developer plans had not been submitted. So when you go back and compare those original accounts for both, uh, the, total amount of retail and office square footage, as well as the total number of housing units that the site, the nineteen acres could support, it was approximately twenty-eight, forty-one percent higher than the actual proposal that you have, uh, before you today. So, uh, part of the, the project team went back to A and F, um, engineering in January of this year with the final site plan, the same site plan that you have before, before you today, uh, that was in the actual original plan. And noted that essentially because there's less, uh, retail office square footage and because there's less gross number of actual housing units being contemplated, their original opinions, uh, for the recommendations in the study are, are firm. So we've had some questions about it being outdated reports. Uh, but I just wanted to clarify on record that it was actually done ahead of the site plan process. Uh, and then also, uh, was reaffirmed based on the final counts. And the final counts we have are actually less density than, uh, the original, uh, project plan recommended. The last, uh, the last question we, regarding public safety personnel. And this is obviously an important one, uh, for, for all of us. And, uh, I know, I believe both chiefs are, are on the Zoom, uh, session, uh, tonight as well. But both have been fully informed of this project and have been, uh, along every step of the way and, uh, are in support of the project. And then as mentioned, uh, in this case, any, same thing with the school age impact. Again, there's about a two and a half to three-year window from the start of construction to where this project fully be delivered in complete state, which would give, um, the public safety departments ample time to, to be prepared, uh, for any, any impact. We'd also like to say that certainly purely on the financial standpoint, the new tax revenues that are generated from the project, uh, certainly become a, a new, uh, new opportunity for, for essential services, public safety being, being one of those. Uh, one of the questions I received, excuse me, right before the session, was the gross tax, gross tax impact as well. So obviously, at this stage, we are still dealing with estimates. We're dealing with estimated assessed values. So where we have commitments from the developer on how much they're going to invest, eighty-three million dollars total, of which sixty-eight million is coming from the developer. Ultimately, their, that amount has to be assessed. So we're currently working in a range where we're, you know, we're estimating about thirty-five to forty-seven million in assessed value just on the for sale, I'm sorry, just on the for rent commercial aspect. And we're estimating about twenty million in new assessed value on the for sale homes, if you will, townhomes and condos. So when you look at that over a twenty-five year period of time, we assume the three percent inflation rate. Those become very large numbers. We look at the amount of taxes generated over a twenty-five year period of time. Uh, so on the, uh, that commercial for rent aspect, that could be as high as twenty-eight million dollars over a twenty, uh, uh, to the twenty-five year period of time. The for sale aspect starts off at around two, two hundred thousand dollars and could ramp up, certainly double within that period of time. Now, what I would, you know, obviously, you've proven to say is that, especially in the for sale side, different homeowner deductions and those kind of things make that a little complicated. Certainly they have the commercial assessment risk. But in the, in the short term, at completion, we're estimating, um, about nine hundred thousand to one million dollars in new gross tax real estate revenue. It's not counting any income tax. It's not counting any, any user fees or anything like that, uh, from this project. Uh, that would ultimately, after the tip expires, be available for the city, the county, library, uh, school, all from, all from this. In a twenty-five year period of time, this project, if assessed values rise at three percent, um, this, this area, this nineteen acres could be worth over about a hundred million dollars in assessed value. I hope that, I hope that helps. Happy to, uh, Chuck and I are here to answer any questions on, on it as well that we, that we can. And I know there's many, many folks that, uh, on this Zoom as well that could answer, answer questions specifically on the school or, or public safety.
Any questions for Mr. Stone at this time?
I have just quite a few to actually be very honest. First, I wanna thank you for the K twelve numbers. That's something that I've been looking for since February. That alleviates my concern with that. That's all I really need with that. Some of these questions are ones that I kind of, going through the traffic saving, through, through that, I have questions or, uh, just reflecting back to the first presentations we've heard and things that I didn't know that had changed since then. So, uh, I'm sorry for all these, but just kind of bear with me. Is the estimate based off of that first presentation we had, is the estimate still about a thousand people throughout those units?
I, I think that's actually a little high. I don't know if you wanna speak to that. The, you know, approximately speaking, you have three hundred and fifty-seven gross units. So the thousand assumes two and a half people per. The more that everyone's looked at this, that the two and a half might be a little high. That's a census extrapolation. So, you know, it, it's, we're really, you know, ultimately, this probably needs to be the developer because they're the ones who are leasing and marketing the space. You're gonna have three hundred and fifty-seven units. So at the low, if there's over one hundred percent lease to one resident occupant, you're gonna have floor a hundred percent occupancy of three hundred and fifty-seven people. At the census average, two and a half people, you know, per household, you're gonna have maybe a ceiling, upper, upper extreme of a thousand. So more likely, it's probably somewhere in the middle. I, I, I don't know if I'm the best person to answer that.
Yeah. I just wanted to double check on that. And then just, and again, some of these are questions I've gotten. I'm talking to folks, but, and it's kind of a general question, but why three hundred and fifty plus units? Why, why that number?
Sure. Um, I could take, uh, an approach to that purely on the financial. And then Chuck certainly, if you wanna speak to it from a development or developmental, kind of place maybe aspect. From the financial standpoint, the, there is a relationship between the number of units and the public participation. So ultimately, this becomes a function of what, what, not only can, can the city put together, uh, but also, uh, in some extent, more importantly, what the developer can, can construct on their side to be able to get the financing terms, to be able to make a public and private partnership of this magnitude feasible in the first place. So certainly the number of units certainly drive, uh, different, uh, you know, net operating incomes for the developer, which change the bank yields. Certainly, probably don't wanna get in the weeds, but generally speaking, less units for the same quality of development would mean higher public participation. Uh, if, if everything stayed, stayed the same.
And then just thinking back to the last meeting when we did here from the developer, he said that there was a chance where they could do more units, scale back some of the square footage and do more units. Is that something that is a possibility? Are we looking at potentially more units than what we're talking about today?
Yeah. So, um, what I understand, what I'm aware of there is that where there's opportunity for, for expansion is actually on the retail office side. So, and the current way that they're configuring the architecture is approximately eighteen thousand or twenty thousand gross square footage in this development is in retail office space. That has the opportunity, if, if they, if the market is very, uh, there's a lot of demand for that, they have the opportunity to actually double that. So it could be as high as closer to thirty-six or forty thousand gross square feet in retail office, all within the same footprints of the site plan. But to my, on the margins, where there's really no discussion on, on more rental units, on the margin, I've heard maybe one or two more townhomes might be able to be fit into the site. Uh, but those would be for sale. So that would change the townhomes from maybe eighteen to twenty gross units. But that's really on the margin just on, on how they're trying to maximize the footprint. But really, the largest delta that, that I've heard in our, our, uh, multiple conversations we have with them every week is that the greatest delta, the greatest flexibility that you may see in changes on the retail office.
Okay. And then, um, I know I've gotten a few questions on, you know, obviously it would be sort of an estimate right now, but it could break down types of work plans, like numbers of that, you know, studios, one in bedroom, two bedroom, things like that.
Yeah. I, we certainly have those. I probably have them on my computer. I'm happy to get them to you either later in the session or even, uh, after the meeting. We have them, uh, it's studio, one bedroom, and then two bedroom. They're, they're finalized. They're finalizing all their four plans now, and then the conversation was in today. There's still zero three-bedrooms allotted. I can't recall off the top of my head the exact mix, but I can give it to you after the session. Or at the audience section.
And then thinking back to the road improvements, I know there's some concerns that I've seen on Facebook and people have posted about Orchard. Are there any plans for improving Orchard Lane now that it's going to be a direct connector from thirty-one to this project?
Yeah, I, you know, off the top of your head.
Thank you. Chuck Hagen, one of the consultants, Roger. And thank you, these are all good questions, all the questions that you're asking. And we're glad we can provide some direct feedback on it. Couple of things that I would say about this, you asked the question, first of all, about the density and how we were coming to that, whether there could be more or less units. One of the interesting things about this project, obviously everybody knows what it was previously, which was middle school. The traffic council generated during that timeframe, we believe, and according to our traffic experts, will far exceed what will go on with the residential and commercial project here. Now, it's been two years, two and a half years or something like that since we've had the school there. And I think that the folks have kind of gotten used to the fact that there isn't a lot of things other than construction going on at the field house. So we feel very comfortable about ramping up the new project parking and entrance and exit, ingress and egress into the site. But we think it is not going to get to the point where it was back when middle school was there, both with what was going on in the way of just normal school hours and then all the activities that they had. Next, the other main issue is cities have to look at where their resources are located. And in this particular situation, you have a situation where all of the improvements, such as infrastructure, fire, police, all of those are in the immediate downtown area. This is a site that is well-suited to be used for something like this with this sort of density. And in fact, works a lot better than what you see with some of the suburban road. But a lot of communities are doing, reaching out as far as they possibly can, and then wondering how the infrastructure is going to support it. So that's another reason why this site is really good and has got. As Adam indicated to you in his response, the final unit counts aren't done. But the fact that we're dealing with a developer that is A qualified, B knows a lot about the sort of units that they're looking to rent, and they know what our market is down here generally, what they hope to get. And they realize that three-bedroom units, which would attract kids, those sorts of things, are really not at all what they're interested in looking for. And more importantly, as it relates to the single-family for sale product, we've already started receiving, actually from some of the councillors, we're receiving info on a regular basis where councillor Hill or somebody has called them and told them, call the city and ask them about the project, get a referral, so that they can be there. We know that that's going to be very popular from a sales standpoint. Most of those people, from almost all of them, are retired couples or folks getting ready for retirement. So we know that it's not going to be a situation where there's going to, maybe their grandkids will be there from time to time, but it's not going to generate kids. Unit counts that the developers are working on now, Adam said, there's not an absolute refined further count at this particular moment. But we think that what will happen is that they will try to maximize the number of them that are two-bedroom units. But a lot of that will be an opportunity for folks to be, like young folks that are coming out of college, two of them can live together and share rent in a two-bedroom, two-bath situation. Not going to generate kids, but will put two disposable incomes inside an individual unit, which is really a good thing for the folks that are running restaurants and whatnot. Adam answered the question too very well about the retail situation and the balance here. The interesting thing is, as the developer begins to look at the uses, we're pressing them actually to try to get more retail in those spaces. And so we're hoping that an additional amount of square footage, which maximizes at about eighteen thousand square feet, could be increased for retail. But when that is done, that basically will reduce the number of residential units between maybe fifteen and twenty or so. So the units are about eight hundred to a thousand square feet probably on average. So if we pick up eighteen thousand square feet, we'd lose, you know, eighteen units, maybe fifteen, you know, by the time you net those things out. So all of those, I think are really good questions relative to what you've had to think about. And I could understand why some of the folks in the neighborhoods might be concerned about this. But I think the city will understand on a ongoing basis, we've got two and a half years, actually three years by the time we ramp up on the actual occupancy in there, to understand if there are issues that we need to deal with. Orchard and the streets that are immediately, getting back to your last question, Orchard and those streets are even less. We've looked at that fairly hard at this point. And we know that we're going to want those people to be able to easily move over, both vehicular standpoint and on foot, to come over to this project. Right now, there are sort of holes in areas where we don't have sidewalk connections, including Orchard doesn't have any sidewalks on it. So the mayor's talked to us about that. He's asked us to look at those other sorts of peripheral kinds of investments that might be necessary as we work through this. And I think we will be able to do that, assuming that we've got a project like this to rely on the tax base that's going to generate. We feel comfortable about making new investments or recommending those to the council and the redevelopment commission.
I found the, took my opportunity to look at my computer. I don't keep it far away. So this was the unit mix that the developer gave us, and this is the apartment unit or rent unit mix, that the developer gave us in the estimation of their impact fees. And in this case, they, again, they had, they list out studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. That time, out of two hundred and ninety-seven units, they're estimating fifty-five percent to be studio, one-bedroom, and forty-five percent two-bedroom. While I have this open, we've talked a lot about the annual tax revenue of the, you know, nine hundred to a million dollars. One of the other items that for counsel from the fiscal body standpoint, the developer also would be agreed to pay approximately seven hundred gross total impact fees generated from this to sanitation facility, parks, et cetera. It's over seven hundred and ten thousand dollars from development. And that would be funded, it would be repeatedly reinvested back into the park area, back into sewer utilities. And then keep in mind, there would be quite a new, quite a vast number of new sewer customers, more customers, et cetera. That would be generating from this as well. Probably more information than you wanted, but that's why I had my computer open, but I don't share.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, like I said, I brought my laundry list. So again, I went through the traffic study and I know this might not be stuff that you can answer directly, so that's totally okay. So I noticed that it talked about a point seven-five percent growth each year in that traffic study. And I went back and I went to the census data. From sixteen to seventeen, we had two-point-seven-six percent. From seventeen to eighteen, we had two-point-three-five percent. From eighteen to nineteen, we had one-point-two-nine percent. So obviously, over that point seven-five growth. Looking at that area, that's probably my biggest concern. I want to see this developed, I want to see it successful. I'm also a data person, and a lot of what I'm basing things on is data. And so looking at this and not having a study with the roundabout and with it, though it may have been anticipated, it's worrisome for me. When I read the traffic study, it looks like it's a combination of the middle school site and then Main and Madison, the parking lot right here. Were the total units that we sent to them, and they said, you know, it falls within this parameters, are those parameters the parameters of the middle school site and Main and Madison?
I'm more on the economics side, so I don't want my traffic answered. Could you have, before I leave the podium, any other kind of financial or economic questions?
Nope.
I'll let the traffic expert answer that, thank you, thank you.
There's another good question, councillor, relative to that. But the traffic analysis that we've done, because we were interested to try and understand what was really going to happen with two, and really a third site that could be available previously, and we have, it was never added to this, into the calculation. But the mayor did the study, they looked at a site that included residential, retail, and they had calculated that for the school site, the middle school site we're talking about, there would be about a hundred more units that would be on there. So quite a sizable number. The city center site, as it was called on there, which is what we would hope over the next couple of years, we'd be in a position to be able to talk to you about that. We think this site is also another really good opportunity to reuse some existing surface parking lot, which is a really underutilized situation. But they took the same plan that was mentioned before, the Rundell-Ernsberger master plan that was done in two thousand and sixteen, looked at that on an updated basis and said, what if that had a first floor retail space? The top two floors would be housing on that, and it would also have a parking structure of some sort, might be partially undergraded. But all of those numbers were calculated into the improvements and into the recommendations that they were making. I might also say that as they go through the analysis of that, and what we hear on an ongoing basis, what the mayor talks to the city engineer about is there's a whole series of opportunities that are identified in with how you deal with issues. If the traffic is happening approximately the same way, it's coming in a little more or a little less. That has to do with upgrades, with stop signs, with signalization, other kinds of things that can take place. And we have the time to watch that and make recommendations. And of course, bring to the council opportunities for ordinances to make those improvements as would be necessary. You know now from being on Madison Avenue, that other than down at the Roundabout, which has signalization only as it relates to US thirty-one, we really don't have any other traffic signals coming north and south into the main street. Serena was identified as a possible location for signalization with the two intersections that would be occurring in this development. You'd have opportunities at a future point if we want to do something there. Meridian Street, been a lot of debate about that on an ongoing basis, mostly internally, about how to deal with that. It is currently a two-way stop. There's a fair number of things that could occur with that bringing into a four-way stop, signalizing and all of those things. It became an issue that we really needed to deal with. So the traffic folks and the city engineer are prepared, and they do this every year, basically twice a year, we look at the things that have been tried, determine whether or not there are upgrades and modifications that need to be made. And then they come back to either the redevelopment commission, the council, or both and say, these are the things that we're going to need to stay up with this. We can't possibly predict everything that can be occurring. But there's been a lot of time spent on this, there've been a lot of experts that we've asked to think through this. And as important, what I said before was, we really need to reuse a site that has not generated since nineteen forty-eight any revenue for the city from a tax standpoint. We think this project can more than pay for itself with the sort of improvements that are being talked about.
Chuck, one question that came up was ADA accessibility to the project and the units and this type of things.
Oh, yeah. The developer will be obliged to meet all of the ADA requirements relative to how this is done. And of course, as it relates to things that are going on in the public realm, all the sidewalks and access points and everything dealing with parking and access to the parking garage would all be ADA accessible. So that will be, that's sort of a right after fire retention, that's sort of the next issue.
And then in the traffic study too, I saw that under the summary of findings, it said Main Street, they had several roadway segments along Main Street operate below acceptable levels of service during A and PMP hours. I guess, just for folks listening, what sort of enhancements are we looking to sort of legitimize?
I can actually speak to that. The traffic study was done, well, actually to back up a couple of things. My name is Kevin Stein, it's a capital project manager for the mayor's office and do a lot of the projects for the redevelopment commission. The traffic study was actually based on a one-point-five percent vehicular growth, which is different than population growth. So to, you know, each percentage of population growth does not manifest itself in a percentage of vehicular growth. But that aside, there was constrictions mentioned on the Main Street flow. We do have a street scape project planned for Main Street, it is completely designed, and we hope to bring that under construction. But the larger goal is that this traffic study works within a constellation of traffic improvements throughout the entire city when it involves east-west traffic. I've only lived in Greenwood ten years, but I can tell you that east-west is kind of the great silver bullet in the greater south side. And Main Street has suffered for decades as being primarily a cut-through from sixty-five to get to West Greenwood and Center Grove. This administration, along with Pryor's, have taken several steps to help alleviate that and balance that flow. The first was County Line exit, which came in nineteen ninety-nine. And the second, which is perhaps most relevant to this, was that the Worsville Road corridor opened shortly after this study was opening, taking significant pressure off Main Street with three exits now to sixty-five. No longer does everyone have to push through Main Street to get everywhere they want to go in Greenwood. And so what we're seeing is a balancing. And Chuck is right, and you're right councillor. As residents change, patterns change, developments change, we're going to have to continue to tailor our investments to meet those needs. We're adding a roundabout at Main Street and just north of Greenwood Commons, which is basically Honey Creek, it has different names, we've added them in Avrith. We are doing additional stages of Worsville Road. And so there's always going to be some challenges. But in this particular case, we've developed multiple systems holistically across Greenwood to help balance traffic of commuters, residents, and just folks out for their trips. So you're exactly right, and that Main Street's had challenges and always will. And we're taking a broad approach to addressing those.
And then I guess I'll just wrap it up with two other ones about the traffic study. I actually couldn't find anything about the roundabout in the traffic study itself. Obviously, they can't anticipate everything, like you said, that was twenty sixteen. Also, the I sixty-nine project with Smith Valley becoming the only entry-exit out of Greenwood and connecting with, with the bypass to Main Street, sixty-five to sixty-nine. Where do we see that kind of playing in to traffic?
So there was analysis done on that intersection. And the roundabout, as a federally and state-funded process through the MOT, had significant analysis done there that was done by Crossroads and various standards of the state and granting agencies there. As far as the sixty-nine opportunity and challenges, it's something we're going to have to work together with the county. And we really don't know what all is going to happen. There's points at Smith Valley, there's County Line Road, there's a very important one going in at one forty-four. And the county has listed an ambitious agenda of what they want to improve, and we're going to have to see how that goes as well. It's part of the reason we've invested heavily in Worsville Road. But traffic flows are dynamic. For many folks, Madison Avenue with the primary north-south corridor in this whole region, it is now a fraction of what it once was. As roads like, well, actually thirty-one and sixty-five and sixty-nine were actually created. And we'll continue to adjust and make investments. But your concerns are valid, the systems are integrated, they are holistic, and it takes consistent investment and planning from cities and other agencies to address those.
And then getting away from traffic, we, I heard what you said about the public safety, and this might be something for the mayor. Breaking it down for full-time firefighters, we're behind forty-five full-time firefighters from where we should be. That's roughly fifteen over that three-year runway, I guess. What sort of our plan to get there?
Yeah, let me first, oh, was that? Yeah, let me first, oh, is that a comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it, Kevin.
All right, yes, sir.
Yes, we are down that number of full-time firefighters. However, we do have eighty part-time firefighters to cover those slots. And every year, with the exception of this year, we've added numbers to the fire department. And we are looking at the budget this year, as we all know, we expected about a twenty percent cut this year with COVID, with what all's gone on. So there were no, nobody added to the police or fire department numbers. But, um, projections are looking better, and the deputy mayor and I are going to be looking at those numbers mid-year as soon as we get the mid-year tax numbers in, and we'll come back to the council with some recommendations. But even though we, we do have forty-seven full-time, we do have eighty part-timers to fill those slots.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we never go in and cover any of the city.
Oh, I, I know we don't, but I also know we're running about three people on the engine when we should have four. Um, we're putting part-time firefighters without health benefits out there. Um, that, that's concerning, and I, I'm hearing from firefighters, it's concerning.
It is a concerning number, but you as the council pass the budgets, you should know where the money comes from.
I have passed one, one budget.
And we, we are trying as hard as we can to add those numbers.
And, and I know we are, that's why, that, that was the reason for my question.
All right. Any other questions on the council? Any discussion?
Uh, I do have some comments, I'd like to.
Yes.
Did you want to go next?
No, go ahead.
I'm already good.
No, I got, I got a whole list. Um, I actually have one question, Ezra.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll go to a five-minute time limit per counselor. No, so we talked about the flexibility in retail, that, those numbers, I can say when you guys first presented, I thought that number was kind of low from what I was expecting. I was expecting more of a first level retail, residential above. So obviously, if that number does fluctuate, we're going to be seeing a reduction in the number of apartment units, right? That's where that retail's going to go in that building development, that case confirmed, well, obviously, it's a process. But with that, so we know we can go down, but do we have a possibility of going up? Do we have a cap as the developer said, hey, three hundred fifty-seven, that's, that's what we got to work with, but we could potentially go a little bit lower? I guess, that, that was my question.
That, that's another good question. The developers on the, on the line now, listening to this, but this, the project agreement that would be executed for this would be definitive as it relates to the number of units and the number of buildings and all of that. If it was determined that at some point in the future that they wanted to come back and ask for some modification, I don't know that there would be anything necessarily that would prevent them from doing that. But I think that the city would need to take notice on all the issues that, that had been brought up here today and other, other things like that. And if the council twenty years from now wanted to consider something like that, I guess they could. But as far as we are concerned for the transaction right now, it's going to be financed, three hundred fifty-seven units, the retail with the flexibility identified in the parking garage, that is the transaction, and that's what it is going to need to be. Now, we have indicated to you, there are still some hurdles to get over here, I mean, but we've talked about part of the reasons why this is an issue. COVID has been an issue. Uh, pricing for lumber and all kinds of things are, are, are in a different situation than they were two years ago when we were starting construction on this. So there may be issues and hurdles that we need to get over, but we think we've got a great team and a, and a good group that is going to work on this with us in the, in the form of the developers that have been recommended by us. But, um, as far as this project at this particular moment in time, there is really, there's, this is what we need, it instructed and wants the city has indicated that wants to invest in, nothing further than that.
Thank you, appreciate it, Kevin. Ezra, you can have it.
Okay, I just got some comments to share. Uh, twenty years ago, I moved to Greenwood because I felt it was a great place to live and raise a family. Uh, after living here for a while, I realized that Greenwood had the potential to be so much more. Uh, that's why I made the decision to run for city council with my top priority being revitalization of Old Town Greenwood. Uh, and this new development fits into the vision that myself, along with many others, saw for the future of our downtown. Uh, this project isn't a secret, it's not trying to be ran through, it's been talked about for years. Uh, I even had several conversations with the late Dr. Chuck Landon, uh, former council member-at-large, about how this development will impact Old Town in a positive way. Uh, therefore, uh, I think, uh, it was good that, uh, some individuals brought concerns, but I felt they were really significant, particularly with the school corporation, public safety. I wouldn't, uh, heard about them well before now. Uh, I've heard from the current Greenwood School Corporation superintendent speaking favor of the project, uh, and I've not heard from any school board members, ISAM staff, uh, nor the police chief or fire chief, uh, with concerns about this development. Uh, as far as the traffic goes, I'm not going to go too much into that, but I think a key component to this development is the walkability, uh, the people that, uh, the residents that are going to want to live there, looking for an alternative, uh, to be able to walk to places versus having to, uh, drive. Uh, I've been the district two rep now for almost ten years. Uh, I don't know why, but people keep electing me. Uh, but my decisions know how to get a hold of me. Uh, my name, phone number, and email has all recently been put out on social media as well, uh, for people to contact me with concerns about the project. And so far, I've only received three emails and no phone calls. Uh, one of the emails was from Tracy who spoke earlier. Uh, I've had some conversations with her. Uh, I know we don't agree on the project, but, uh, I admire her courage for actually coming to the council and, and speaking. Uh, I've also received emails in support of the project. Uh, in addition to that, I've had several conversations with residents, business owners in favor of the project. My point is, to me, the support for this project far outweighs the opposition. Uh, and I feel, uh, the project team has done a good job of addressing the concerns with some legitimate data. Um, any project I've been a part of in Greenwood since being on the council has faced opposition. In fact, I've seen a lot more opposition than what I've seen for this project. Uh, the opposition for this current five-twenty-three Mad App project seems to be led by a small group of people on social media who have done nothing but complain about everything the city has done since I've been in office. I used to engage with these individuals, but no matter what we say or do, they continue to complain and, and are never appeased. It has become hard to take these individuals seriously because they seem to have a personal vendetta against the city. These are the type of individuals who complain and then all of a sudden act like they support you because they seek your public endorsement. But then after you endorse them, they turn around and stab you in the back. They even come into your district and start spreading misinformation, telling people that you're not doing your job. Well, if you're going to come in and mess with District Two, you're going to get the horns.
Are you the ball?
That would be me. Maybe if this, these individuals spend less time seeking endorsement, endorsements, more time talking to voters, and got a real pulse on District Two, instead of making one up, they could have won an election. There's a right way and a wrong way to handle things, and these individuals choose the wrong way. To those individuals, I'll pass on a quote that I learned at a very young age while trying to survive on the suburban streets of Indianapolis. I'm going to quote Ice Cube, "Please check yourself before you wreck yourself." That's all I have.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir. I, since our last meeting, I've kind of got a little aggravated, so I started going out, I've been to Indianapolis, talking to people that are leasing and selling these same projects or condos and stuff, and I talked to them about children, schools, and they said that's not the demographics they're looking for, just like this project doesn't have playgrounds, doesn't have anything for children. This is going to be, uh, not turning children away, but it's for the young people, it's for the older people who want to walk. And the only criticism, I met with two bankers, and I asked them if this would be a good project to fund. They said they couldn't do it locally, they'd have to go to the home office downtown. But when I look at this project and I look at the money the developers put in, the studies the developers done, they believe this project is going to succeed, and they're not going to put money in a project that won't go through. I got one email, and I think it's the same email all of us got, lady had five different things she complained about, and then last one, uh, I'm worried about the traffic down here. Well, the traffic studies show what's going on, and there's going to be full newer construction coming in the next year or two, so I look for those problems to be only needed. The only criticism I took was that there ain't enough places to eat in downtown Greenwood. I look at this as a piece of the puzzle, it's the top-shelf project. We have settled for less than the best projects, they're good projects. The swimming pool wasn't big enough, we had to cut projects from that. The police department, when it was built, they cut five thousand square feet off it to put the community center. They built a community center, it wasn't big enough. So this is our opportunity to bring in something that is a plus, to bring in something that will draw people, that will hook the walking trails, it'll hook up downtown Greenwood, which I think will come into a bigger, uh, develop that area into more restaurants and everything. I feel that after studying all this, when I talk to the, some council people in Indianapolis, they're not worried about development, they're worried about gun violence and murder. We don't have that problem. We have a good police department, we have a good fire department, FBI statistics, two point one officers per one thousand. When I became a police officer in nineteen seventy-seven, we didn't have the numbers to match with the town people then. We still don't, but we've given the police department the tools, the budget to replace those officers that retired, to bring on new officers. We implemented for lateral transfers, we're working within the city to make this a better place and to keep it a great place to bring your kids. I doubt seventy students show up at ISAM the first day of school in August. They could, but I doubt it because that's not what they're looking for. And then when we read District Greenwood or re, rezone, several young people came in and said they want to live where they work, eat where they work, and shop where they work. So this would be another good project for that. And again, it's, I talked to the alumni, the people who graduated from the building that used to be on that site. They're like, why couldn't you say, you know, Jim, well, it was rotten, it was going to fall down anyway? But the, I have not received one negative comment on this, other than there's not enough restaurants. I see this as a positive, I see this as a cornerstone that we can make history in making Greenwood a better place at connecting something where we can connect all that, rather than just have Saturday night at the dog and sense for the cars. We can do more, and the parks are great. And again, you live a quarter mile from the fire department and you live an eighth mile from the police department. Police cars are going through there twenty-four hours a day. I don't look for that to be a primary, that's going to be a problem because it's going to be well-lit, central-located, and it's not going to draw those people. So other than that, like I say, heard nothing negative. The citizens that have talked to me and come to me, they really haven't come to you, I've had to go ask them, but there's no negatives that I've really come. And the biggest thing was, we're worried about the traffic. And, you know, you explain that, and then they handle it, but a lot of things are being circulated that aren't necessarily true. So, you know, that's why I went out and looked at these other places, went outside Greenwood to find out what was going on, and where I can come back and give factual answers and truthful answers. Other than that, have a good night.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the council?
I do.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bates raised his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I'll try to be as brief as I can. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone, and somebody else has already done this, so I, I followed that as well, the man-hours has been put into this for a year or so probably in the offing of that. Uh, and when I was first, uh, introduced to this plan, uh, I began to think, wow, this is, this is a win-win. Uh, it's just, what, what could be, uh, said that would not, uh, be positive, I suppose? But in, in thinking more about it, uh, I came to some conclusions, uh, in my own mind, and certainly it probably, uh, is, uh, certainly against the grain in terms of what has been said here tonight. And I also appreciate, I'll give everybody else in the dialogue that's been given here tonight, especially for, for the benefit of the public. Uh, and that's one of the reasons that maybe I'd start there first, that I'm disappointed that we can't have, I understand, uh, that not everybody is computer savvy. Uh, I would like to see people here in this, uh, in this room, uh, for arguments for this project. And unfortunately, we seem to have used COVID as an excuse, uh, in many situations, and it's kind of like an excuse for everything nowadays, uh, where people can't gather or they can't do this, or they can't do that. And I understand, of course, the importance of COVID. I'm a COVID survivor, and I know about COVID, and I understand the, I understand, you know, the caution, uh, you know, about not getting it, and now we got strains, I understand that. Uh, but it really disappoints me that we can't have people here in person. I just think that makes a difference for our votes, uh, to this project. Uh, and then, of course, what gets me also is that, as I said, when I first heard this, I thought, man, this is a win-win. There's nothing, what, what can I think of, uh, that would be negative? But then I began to think along these lines, because I had heard and have heard, the cliche is, if it's too good to be true, it probably is. Now, maybe I'll be wrong, because I probably want to be in the minority, and that's fine here. Uh, and I'm not, also, I'm not a big fan of public-private apartment schemes. We don't do that for our developers. When we're developing, uh, you know, a subdivision, we might put in, uh, some infrastructure, uh, for that effect, but we don't give them, uh, any, uh, as far as I know, any incentives other than, oh, you know, we'll, you know, we'll be glad to have you and, uh, let you develop, uh, this, uh, subdivision, uh, with our regulations and regulations, and I understand that as well. And so, uh, that's kind of the, where I am in my mindset. Uh, the biggest thing I guess I'd say is not being able to hear people in person, uh, in, 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 uh, in relationship to the things that I said. So that's where I stand, and that's my thinking on the matter.
All right, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, many of you know that I'm on the board at Greenwood Village South, and I just wanted to share, I've had conversations, and it's been on their part contacting me with questions about this development and the things that they're hearing. And they are extremely excited because they feel like that there's going to be a lot more activities that are going to be nearby. Uh, many of them have given up their cars, and there's a bus there, and there's car transportation, and they have doctor appointments. But many of them do walking and walk to Mrs. Curl's like once a week and get ice cream. There's a group of them that do that. Uh, they're very active people, just because it's a retirement community doesn't mean that they don't do a lot of things, and they're really looking forward to this. Uh, they just, the only thing that concerns them is the sidewalk, if they're going to safely get here. Uh, but other than that, they, they can't wait for this to happen. Uh, I also feel like that we've got an opportunity here. It's, it's hard to make seniors happy and to make the younger crowd happy with the same set of circumstances. And a lot of people felt like when we did Madison Avenue, that the, uh, the, the path or the trail was overly designed, and they were concerned about the narrowness of the streets. But the younger people, they're using their bicycles, and they're walking, and they want everything in the immediate area of where they live. Uh, they want a dry cleaners close by and those things. And so I think us having the walkability and so many things will come that we haven't had here in the immediate downtown area. So I'm excited about it. I had some questions, but I've been able to get those answered. And I would just like to say to you, Ron, I was unhappy when, uh, we weren't meeting as a council in person because I thought it was easy to talk over each other, and I didn't feel like that we were having the in-depth conversations. And I had a conversation with, uh, the president, and I had a conversation with the mayor and the deputy mayor, and I was glad that we, because I think projects like this, it's important that we have good in-depth conversation and bring questions to the forefront. Uh, however, I received a phone call asking me my opinion about us opening it up to the public yet this month. And I was concerned that because numbers were going up, and I asked that we wait until the end of this month, and by then we were through the spring break and we wouldn't really know where things were. I think, uh, I, I guess that there must have been more of us that had a concern than didn't. I don't know how close that was, but I feel like that I don't know how close that was, but I feel like that consideration was, was made.
All right, any other discussion on the council? Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
I have a couple of points, Mr. President. Dave Lexi here. My full-time job is I'm an attorney, and I represent, in some cases, residential real estate developers. And I happen to know that in central Indiana, at least as of a few months ago, the entire region had 20% fewer homes for sale than we did five years ago. And as everybody has seen, real estate, residential real estate prices are going up, partly because of a supply problem. I feel like this is a good opportunity to contribute to the supply, and not only that, but to add a unique product, not just the Greenwood market, but to the central Indiana market. The second recent phenomenon I would like to discuss is COVID and the long-term impact that COVID has had on the way that we're going to work. I think that the traffic study was done in 2016 and updated in 2021, but not, but might not have taken into account the permanent changes that many of us are experiencing in terms of how we work. My wife and I have been working from home for a year, and we don't know if that will ever change. So we've gone from a family that had three cars leaving every morning to a family that has one car leaving this house every morning and coming back every night. I think that, based on what I've heard from my clients, I think that's not unusual. Some people go to work maybe twice a week now and work from home the rest of the time. Some people go to work later. There's a, there's a lot more variance and variation to our work patterns than existed, say, 20 years ago, when everybody in Greenwood got in their car and left. So I think that we'll be able to mitigate and absorb the traffic impact from this pretty easily, especially at the beginning, and that'll give Kevin and the other traffic experts time to catch up or address any problems that we can't foresee today. But other than that, I agree with all of the supporters' comments, and I support this project.
All right, anything else from the council? Seems like everybody's spoken with me, and I'll just simply say, I support this project. I've been involved in it for a long time as a member of the RDC. And we encourage people who speak not to repeat what's been said before, and so that's all I've got to say. Everything's been said, I think, so. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2113, first reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Excuse me, Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Nay.
And Williams.
Aye.
Resolution 2113 passes first reading seven to two. Our ordinance 2113, resolution 2109.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of City of Greenwood, Indiana redevelopment district tax increment revenue bonds of 2021-523 South Madison Project for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for certain project costs and incidental expenses in connection therewith, and paying the cost and expenses arising from the issuance of such bonds sponsored by Hill, Hopper, Dine, Campbell, Gibson, Lexi, and Williams.
You have a motion? Someone, this is my Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Hopper. I'm going to assume that everything that was said in this meeting so far concerning ordinance 2113 will apply to resolution 2109. Am I saying that assuming that?
Works for me.
All right, then, any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2109, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Nay.
Resolution 2109 passes second, or first reading on a vote of seven to two. Second reading, resolution 2106.
A resolution amending resolution number 2006. A resolution declaring a certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing. County Line Properties LLC, 1173 Airport Parkway LLC, phase two, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
You have a motion? With Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2106, second reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
And Campbell.
Aye. Resolution 2106 passes second reading seven to two. Resolution 2107.
A resolution declaring certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing. GLA Properties LLC, four-building complex sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
You have a motion?
Someone.
This is Mr. Hopper, second. Second, Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2107, second reading.
Gibson. Um, Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Dine.
Aye. Resolution 2107 passes second reading on a vote of six to three. Resolution 2110.
A resolution confirming resolution 2108, declaring a certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing. CA Industrial Holdings LLC, two-building complex sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Someone.
No motion by Mr. Hopper. You have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Dine. I have a question, Ms. Coons. Is this resolution worth the public hearing it's for?
Correct, it's a public hearing, and then you act on, to either confirm or...
Well, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. All right, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against resolution 2110, please speak up, state your name and address for the record.
Again, Randy Gooden, 1157 Central Park Boulevard.
So, having a hard time hearing you?
My apologies. Randy Gooden, 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana. Be very, very brief, Mr. Campbell, as I stated earlier. My concerns with this is, this is, again, a large-scale project with absolutely no commitments. If you go to section two and subsection eight and nine, where they were applying, there is no statement of benefits, where they list out the number of jobs, any type of salaries. We have no idea what this is going to be bringing in. And I, I know that we've been promised jobs that will pay in the $25 to $30 an hour range. And I, again, there are certain people that I trust with this, but it's just the fact that we used to require that they list this, and now all of a sudden, we're getting a little bit loose with this again, and it's just concerning that we have absolutely no commitment on that. And I will stop at that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against resolution 2110?
Mr. Presidents, Pat Sherman, Compass Point CPAs. That information's on the S, there are two SB1s on this project, one for each building, and that information is on each of those SB1s. I'm available if the council has any questions.
All right, you have any questions for Mr. Sherman?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. In looking at this resolution, I couldn't see if it's for a tax abatement. I couldn't see, I couldn't see a schedule.
This resolution confirms what we did already with the resolution 2108, which was the tax abatement. So we've already passed resolution 2108, which is the tax abatement.
I get it.
And then this resolution confirms that we did that.
Okay.
Is that correct, Ms. Coons?
That is correct.
All right.
And is there a reason we did, doing this as opposed to, I don't think we do it with everything, but it comes this our way? So why is this different?
We do this on all of the tax abatments.
When you have to declare an ERA, if the property is already in an ERA, it does not have a separate hearing. If you are creating one, you declare and then do the confirmatory.
Very well.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing? Hearing none, we're closing the public hearing. Any further discussion on the council?
I think at Mr. Lexi's request, we stopped asking for SB1s for spec buildings that had a given number of jobs and salaries.
Again?
Yeah, the, for a while, we, some people were submitting what would be a guess as to what the jobs and salaries would be, because the, by the very definition, it's a building that doesn't have a tenant, so...
My preference, my preference was for an educated, educated guess.
Right. So any further discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2110.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Nay.
Williams.
Nay.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
And Dixon.
Aye.
Resolution 2110 passes on a vote of six to three. New business introduction of ordinance resolutions, resolution 2111.
A resolution declaring a certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements and personal property for tax abatement, and setting the time and place for a public hearing. Ermco Inc., sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Anybody want to, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, this is the deal that we have coming forward in front of you with the Ermco Corporation. Got to tell you, it's been a pleasure and honor to work with Ermco on this deal, to try to find the exact location for them, and to see the number of employees they bring into the city along with the salaries they bring in. I'd like to introduce Greg Gossett, he's the president and CEO of Ermco. He is online and here to answer any further questions they might have for you.
And I want to start by thanking the council and the citizens that are online for giving us some time on your agenda this evening. If you don't mind, I'd like to just give you a couple of minutes of introduction to Ermco. We're a full-service electrical technology and automation contractor founded in 1962 by my father, Ed Gossett. From our humble beginnings with only three employees, we've grown to be one of the largest contractors in the country, regularly listed in the top 200. We currently have 127 overhead employees, and we're also responsible for almost 1,200 craft people around the country. We're an extremely resilient business. We're in our fourth generational leadership. And in 2014, we entered into a new era of ownership when the family of shareholders, my brothers and sisters and I, created an ESOP and sold the company to our employees, so we are now 100% employee-owned, with every decision made that will be in the best interest of the organization. With the scopes that we, scopes of work that we cover, we work on every type of project imaginable, from a service call in someone's home, installing a ceiling fan with a group of over 15 service trucks on the road every day, to doing all of the electrical systems and automation work for $100 million project, like the most recent job of that size, the brand-new New Orleans Airport. We're very strong in sporting facilities. We have built over 34 major sporting stadiums or arenas around the country, but we're also very engaged in entertainment, healthcare, data centers, and institutional work, and we're recently awarded all of the new renovation and updates at the casino over in Shelbyville. We're very engaged in the community. We sponsor and fully support many community events and activities. We were previous supporter of WhamFest, and we highly encourage all of our employees to get engaged at a grassroots level. We look forward very much to be a member of the Greenwood business community. We currently have two locations. Our headquarters is in Indy, and we have a small office in Columbus that mainly serves the Cummins and southern Indiana marketplace. In the past, we've also had two other locations, one in Lafayette, Indiana, doing a lot of work for Eli Lilly, and one in Orlando, where we did almost all of the work for Universal Studios and Disney. We've been headquartered in three locations in the history of our business in our 60 years. Each move has allowed us to better organize our business for tremendous growth. At one point, based on the volume of work that was taking place at Disney, Orlando operations actually rivaled Indian volume, and we'd actually considered relocating our headquarters there until 2011 occurred, which basically crippled the amusement park industry and tourism industry for several years. With this move, while I'm a longtime Johnson County resident, we had actually considered moving our operations to either Cincinnati or Louisville. We do a lot of work in those marketplaces, and we're looking at a lot of work down there. But we actually ended up settling on our location in Greenwood because we believe it's really going to give us the greatest opportunity to serve the tri-state area. We're excited to be planning a facility that our employees can be proud of, and one that they can all enjoy working in. But based on our involvement in national peer groups, national associations, and national projects, we think it will also be something that we're going to be very proud to bring a lot of visitors from around the country into as well. We're just excited to be a part of the Greenwood community. I want to also ask Chad Bachman, our CFO, who is additionally a Johnson County resident, to share a little bit about, with you about what this abatement will mean for us as an organization.
Hey, everyone. Again, like Greg said, I'm Chad Bachman, CFO of Ermco. First, I want to thank you for your time this evening. Wanted to briefly tell you about our project and how we all use the abatements if approved. First of all, we're looking to build a 200,000-square-foot facility, of which 60,000 square feet would be office space, a two-story office space, 30,000 each floor, with an additional close to 143,000 in warehouse space. That will almost be over 300% more space than we currently have now. So we're looking for expansive growth in the near future, but also, like Greg said, we've only had three headquarters in our lifetime, and we're hoping this will last us even longer. So me being a longtime resident of Greenwood, I'm very happy to be able to have our office in Greenwood as well, very proud of that. We do thank you for your consideration for the abatement. It will help, help us offset some of the construction costs, capital costs, as well, as well as our overhead costs. Like I said, we're going to be increasing our space about 300%, which internally will be increasing our office expense about 300%. But not only will it help offset that, it'll help offset some of the growth in wages and staff that we're looking to accomplish. Like we, we did put in our SB1s, we're looking to increase our employees over the next few years of about, around 20 employees with an average salary of about 70 grand per employee. So looking to get some project engineers, professional engineers, and account managers into, into that building to help our growth. So again, don't want to take too much of your time, but thank you for your consideration in, in these tax abatements, and look forward to having our corporate headquarters in Greenwood.
All right, thank you. And we are looking forward to having...
One thing I did want to be sure we shared, in addition to the 127 overhead employees, we run a small manufacturing facility in the back of our, in our, in our shop facility. There'll be 30 employees that come along with that that are there on a daily basis as well. So it's actually 150 full-time opportunities that are coming into the marketplace in addition to the positions that we are talking about adding as we grow in the future.
Good, thank you very much. All right, any questions on the council at this time?
Mr. President, I don't, I sort of have a question, but I'd like to make a motion if anybody else has a question.
All right. You want?
I, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to bring this to the first reading, if it's not the public to do so.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules through first reading. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules through first reading on resolution 2111.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading on resolution 2111, a vote of nine to zero. You have a motion for first reading? Listen by Mr. Williams, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2111, first reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Resolution 2111 passes first reading nine to zero. Thank you, everyone involved in this, we look forward to having Ermco here in Greenwood. All right, miscellaneous business. Audience, is anyone in the audience wishing to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda? Now's your opportunity, if you'd speak up, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit.
Good evening once again, and I promise I'll be brief. Randy Gooden, 1157 Central Park Boulevard, South Greenwood, Indiana, 46143. I just have a very, very quick question. Mayor, will the city building be opened up before the next council meeting on the third, or are we going to be doing Zoom meetings at that time? And if so, are there any plans to open up possibly one of the school auditoriums or anything where the public could attend en masse? Thank you.
The current plan is to be open on Monday the third. We will continue to monitor the COVID numbers throughout the next couple of weeks, but the current plan is to be open again on the next meeting.
All right, anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council at this time? Hearing none, then moving on, miscellaneous business from the council, I do have an announcement, by the way, our next council meeting will be open to the public. There will be, the rules for the state have changed, there will be a maximum capacity of 40 people here in this room. The, the meetings will still be held as Zoom meetings, however, under the new rules, we have to have a quorum of counselors here, present in person, or we can't have a meeting. And each counselor has to attend half of the meetings in person over the next year. Basically, you need to be here once a month, you know, that would be half. Mr. Lexi, I know is incapacitated at the present, and, but still, at some point, he'll be able to come, hopefully, and each counselor will need to attend half of the meetings in the next year, and, again, we need five counselors here, in person, to conduct the meetings, so. And, but May 3 will be open to the public, and again, basically you can see how the seating arrangement is now, that's what the capacity will be for a May 3 meeting.
The ruling is coming from work.
Sorry, what?
The ruling, you said the new rules.
State.
States.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the state set the rules under the, the current. That we, that we can actually do them virtually, but there, that's changing under the new orders from the government, so. All right, any, any thing else from the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to speak, I've probably been privy to the best seat in the House tonight, because I've been able to monitor the chat, I guess, popping up on the Zoom screen over here.
I wonder what that was.
And I do want to state, you know, and I understand there's been a lot of things on social media, Ezra and I, you reached and kind of talked about this a little bit. I understand, I personally, too, was not very happy with public not being able to be in the room. I understand, yes, it is nice sometimes to see a face, and to see those seats full of people, really kind of get a feel for what's going on. However, the arguments and the statements that this has been done behind closed doors, guys, public counsel, these plans were discussed before I was even elected, so the preliminary drawings, all this stuff was done before, I think my name was even filed with the county, these things have not been pushed through in the dark. Your counselors are available, email, phone number, all public record, and again, I'll state, just like Ezra did, Tracy was probably the only email that I received from any constituent. She's telling me from my constituent, she lives in Ezra's district, I believe, but I have not heard from a single constituent regarding this matter, so, again, I, I, it may not be popular to say it, but I feel like it needs to be addressed, because it's been a hot topic on the chat box for the past two hours. Although you can't be in this room, Zoom has been an option, emailing your counselors is being an option, calling us has been an option, it's been used for many projects before this, so, again, I, I'm not trying to shoot anybody's feelings for not being able to be in this room, but just like I said, I have received those opportunities of them there to communicate with this project, and, again, hopefully, you'll be satisfied to know that you can be here on May 3, but, again, it felt like that needed to be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anything else from the other council, I'm nodding. All right, as you can see, we have a couple CF1s we need to go through, so. Mr. Hopper, you want to start us?
Yeah, let's roll. J C Properties, plus Suite A, Resolution 1616, I find to be in substantial compliance.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
Find ABM Real Estate, Suite B, Resolution 1616, to be in substantial compliance. Second.
Second, most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
KCH Investments, Suite C, Resolution 1616, I find to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
KCH Investments, Suite D, Resolution 1616, I find to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I W P Holdings, Suite E, Resolution 1616, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I W P, why can't I say IPW, it's IWP Holdings, Suite A, Resolution 1616, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose.
I would like to just state that there is a typo. Number two, he had ABM, and number seven and eight, ABM, that's actually AMB Real Estate, if anyone's actually looking at the CF1, so, that's AMB Real Estate.
Okay.
This, Lexi, you might do it.
All right. Did we do number seven?
No. A, AMB Real Estate, Suite G, Resolution 1616, I find to be in substantial compliance.
Mr. Uh, most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Passes unanimously.
AMB Real Estate, Suite H, Resolution 1616, I find to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, oh, I'm sorry, did you say second?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, well, you looked up at me, I can't see, I can't see your lips move, so.
I'm just going to vote ahead of everyone.
Second, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I A, IC Income Fund Crossroads, Resolution, wait, yeah, I'm assuming it's Resolution 1311, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I All-Star Properties, Resolution 1623, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I Nazi Tool America, Resolution 1327, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say ayes.
Aye.
All pose. Passes unanimously.
F I Magistics, Resolution 1733, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I Greenwood, STS, Resolution 17-08, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I Pointer Sheet Metal, Resolution 1415, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I Pointer Sheet Metal, Resolution 1908, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
Sean, this one, the South Point Business Center, I thought we didn't vote on these until after they completed construction, they don't have a, an assessed value until then, do they, as far as our projects are concerned?
But sometimes they file kind of like a status, and you've gone ahead and acted on them.
Okay. All right, then, then I'll find South Point Business Center, Shear GW4, Resolution 2009, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I Stag Industrial Holdings, Resolution 1726, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All pose. Hearing none, passes unanimously.
F I WJH2 Real Estate, Resolution 1016, to be in substantial compliance.
Most by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates, all in favor say aye.
Aye.